Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to this absolutely super day. There couldn't be a better time to celebrate the city's birthday and the birthday of our country and be able to combine it all in one week. This is absolutely delightful and I hope everybody else is having such a great time with all the celebrations this week. So, let's ask the city clerk to call the roll now that we're all here. Councilmember Terry?
Here.
Councilmember Gatewood?
Here.
Councilmember Sander?
Here.
Vice Mayor McGarvey?
Here.
Mayor Budge? Here. So, we also want to welcome the people who will either watch this on cable or on their computers and we'll ask Stacy to read the playback schedule.
The meeting of the Rancho Cordova City Council will be cable cast on Metro Cable 14, the local government affairs channel on Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse. The meeting is closed captioned and webcast at www.sacmetrocable.tv. Today's meeting will air Thursday, July 5th at 9:00 a.m. and Friday, July 6th at 6:00 p.m. on Channel 14. A copy can be ordered from the city clerk's department and a webcast of this meeting will also be available on the city's website within 48 hours of adjournment of this meeting.
Thank you, Stacy. As we always do, we're going to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and an invocation. And the Pledge of Allegiance, I'm going to ask Howard Williams to lead the pledge, sitting in the back. And if you would join us and remain standing for the invocation by Wayne Langford from the Church of Jesus Christ of the Latter-day Saints. Howard.
(Inaudible)
Our dear only Father, we're grateful to be gathered here tonight to celebrate this great city and this week to celebrate the great nation that we live in. We're grateful for the freedoms that we enjoy, especially our religious freedoms, to worship thee as we please. We're grateful to be gathered here tonight as a council and members of this community. The council together, we pray that as we do so, we may do so with respect and kindness. That this meeting will be a great step forward in our democracy here and for this city. We ask a special blessing upon the first responders and those that are fighting fires throughout this area, to please watch over them and bless them, that no harm and danger will come over them. Bless those that are displaced by the fires, that they may soon return to their homes and find all as well. Again, we pray for these things humbly and do so in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen.
Thank you, Wayne. Please be seated, everyone. We always have presentations, okay? So, we're going to call on Diane Rogers, first. And actually, I'm sorry, I should explain, the order of the presentations has been restructured. The, we, come on Diane, we are awaiting our Assembly member and colleague Ken Cooley, who also has a presentation, and then we're going to hear from Diane Rogers at the chamber, so that will be reversed. We will then have a city birthday video that was done specifically for today. We will have employee milestone anniversary presentations. And then we are going to do a very special presentation to recognize a retiring principal here in Rancho Cordova. So, Diane.
Madam Chairman, thank you and members of the council. I am Diane Rogers, President and CEO of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce, and I'm joined at the podium today by two, with two of our ambassadors, Jen Alton and Kimberly Austin. Kimberly was our Ambassador of the Year last year, so we're pleased to have them join us. And we just wanted to offer our congratulations and a certificate recognition on behalf of the Board and members of the Rancho Cordova Chamber of Commerce. We offer our heartfelt congratulations to the city of Rancho Cordova in celebrating 15 years of cityhood. We appreciate your support for the prosperity of our business community and for the partnership that we share. So, congratulations and thank you, and thank you for your partnership.
Thank you very much, Diane. I guess I should come and get it. It's probably, it's probably appropriate also to remind people that in 2010, when
on this 15th observance of the cityhood of Rancho Cordova. Daryl, good evening. Very good to be here. And I have a commendatory resolution, which I can assure you, extols at great length all
we won our All-America City Award, we, one of the reasons we won it was what we called
the many virtues of Rancho Cordova. I only intend to read two wherethes, one which is appropriate and conventional, and one
the big tent, because this is a city that operates on partnerships. And at that point in time, we had a three-legged stool. We had the city, we had the Chamber of Commerce, and we had the Court of the Community Council.
which I hope will leave you moved in part by current events.
Then we added the Travel and Tourism Bureau, making us a four-legged stool, so we're even
So, this is an Assembly Resolution by the Honorable Ken Cooley, 8th Assembly District,
more secure today than we were back in 2010.
relative to committing the city of Rancho Cordova.
But we couldn't be where we are without this partnership and the similar partnerships
It opens, whereas the city of Rancho Cordova is observing the 15th anniversary of its incorporation
that we have. So, thank you again. Okay. So, now we're going to call on our colleague and our Assembly member, Ken Cooley.
on July 2nd, 2018, and a recognition of its progress and growth throughout the years, it is appropriate to extend to local residents and city officials. The heartiest congratulations to the people of the state of California. And it goes on a similar vein for great length. But then in light of last week's news, I felt I needed to add a special Rancho Cordova incorporation-only addition to this resolution. Some of you may know about this, I might have mentioned it at the time, but it was a long time ago. Whereas, on June 18th, 2003, in a private letter regarding the founding of Rancho Cordova, United States Supreme Court Justice Anthony M. Kennedy expressed his congratulations to then-councilmember-elect Ken Cooley and his colleagues for working to reinvigorate the principle of participatory democracy. Further relating that, quote, quoting now Justice Kennedy, won't be, had that title too much longer, "That self-government must not be an abstract ideal, but must be a reality, and we must be unceasing in our efforts to make it more effective and respected by our people. Now therefore be it resolved by Senate Member Ken Cooley, who takes great pleasure in congratulating, committing the city of Rancho Cordova upon the 15th anniversary of its incorporation, and applauds it for the outstanding contributions it has made to the history of California." And I would say, in fulfilling that well-articulated vision of making representative democracy more respected and effective among our people, I think that is the high charge of government. I think the strides of Rancho Cordova as a city and all the many things that have been undertaken and the community civic events, which we're on the cusp of yet another one, memorable one. But I definitely think that 15 years on, I can look at those words from Justice Kennedy and think, well, we sure have been working on that and made great strides. So, it's an honor, so Mr. McGarvey, or Madam Budge, pardon me.
Gentlemen, we should all go down.
Yeah, please all come down. So, just to come clean, I went to law school at McGeorge, where Justice Kennedy taught constitutional law. And I knew that as just happened last week, the Supreme Court term ends at the end of June. I also knew that Justice Kennedy teaches a European law course that starts in late July in Salzburg, Austria. So, knowing those two facts, I thought, well, you never know, Justice Kennedy might be back in Sacramento, his home, on the 1st, when we're going to form our city. And so, I had sent him a note of invitation to see if he was going to be in Sacramento, if it might be possible to induce him to actually come out and be a part of our proceedings, which falls in the category, well, you know, so much of life, if you don't ask the question, you certainly can't close the deal. So, that tremendous quote came from the politest darned letter of declination that you would ever expect to receive, and from no less the purges of the US Supreme Court Justice. But forget that, what a great quote about our role in supporting participatory democracy.
You're right, Ken. Some of us got to, some of us were treated to a lunchtime speech by him in DC last year, and it was absolutely marvelous.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Very good, thank you. It's an honor to be with you.
Enjoy the evening. Okay, then I think perhaps Cyrus would like to introduce the next presentation?
I'd be happy to, Madam Mayor. As we take the time to celebrate our 15th year as a city, I think we felt it would be appropriate to take you down the memory lane through some pictures and photographs that we've taken over the years that reflect on our people, on the accomplishments we've had. It's been truly a great, fun, exciting, successful, eventful journey the last 15 years, and I hope, this is a very short video, it's going to take only about five minutes, but we thought we would just take a few minutes to reflect on those days and look at some, and think of some really great memories that we've had. I hope you enjoyed this short video. It's, we have many, many more pictures, we just wanted to select some, a few that represent our community, our staff, our organization, and also a reflection of the great accomplishments that we've had as a community. I want to thank our communication team for putting this together, especially Ashley Downton, who gathered all the pictures and put this video together. Thank you.
Okay. So, now we'll move into the next presentation, which is employee milestone anniversaries. So...
I would like to do that from the podium.
Okay.
We have had a tradition of recognizing major milestones for our employees and the people in this organization who have accomplished a major milestone in serving this community and in working for this city. I think we felt with the, as we celebrate our 15th year anniversary, it's just an honor to me that we still have quite a few people who have been with this organization for 15 years. And for a small organization, that's somewhat unusual, but it would be great for us to pause for a minute as we celebrate our 15-year birthday, to maybe, as I call your name, to please come down here. We have a certificate that we have prepared, and we would like to ask you to be recognized for 15 years of service to this community, to this city, and we thank you for the great work and hard work that everybody has put into it. So, let me start with the honorable councilmembers. So, Councilmember Linda Budge, Mayor Linda Budge, 15 years. Vice Mayor Bob McGarvey, please join us down here. And Councilmember David Sander, please. Would also like to ask Adam Lindgren to please come down and join us.
And at this time, I would like to ask Cyrus to join us, because Cyrus also gets...
Kurt Haven, please, come join us. Joe Cuff. Thank you. Howard Williams. Marilyn Phelps, if she's here, please. And Lisa Brown. So, just a very brief note, 15 years ago, the first week of July, when we opened the city hall, it was a very small group of people, city staff, city, we didn't really have a whole lot of staff at that point, but many consultants and contractors who joined the city, and this group right here are the ones who've been with the city continuously for the last 15 years. So, thank you, everyone, and I was hoping that if we could do a group picture right here with everybody who's getting the certificate.
I'm getting the podium in the way. Yeah, I need you more in...
Yeah.
That's better. Thank you.
Oh, that's beautiful. All right. Big smiles.
I didn't wear my ideals.
Right, yes.
And now it's city staff, just telling you.
at this point, I would like to call on the people who have been with the city for the last 10 years, for 10 years. So, David McCoy, if you could come join me, please. Ryan Taylor. And Stacy Delaney. So, please, Council, if Madam Mayor or the rest of the council, if you're interested to join this group for a picture, we'd really appreciate it.
It's for them.
So, Council, if I may ask, don't go too far, because we have a group of five-year employees that we want to recognize. Stephen Watson, please, if you could join here at the... He's not here tonight, so I think he was had the day off. Scott Sparks, Scott. And Donald Terry, Councilmember Donald Terry. So, should be...
That's us. Everyone, the only good things happened that year.
Nice place.
I can't see you, Bob.
Actually, can you shift a little bit this way? Sorry, guys. I can't get Bob without getting the podium. There we go.
It's a small group, we should...
Thank you, Council. As we honor those people we have, we're celebrating tonight, we also would like to pay tribute to one of our, or two of our colleagues who are not among us anymore. Our first mayor, Dave Roberts, who passed on way too soon in 2004, and our councilmember, Dan Skogland. Tonight, we have the honor of having Pam Skogland in the audience, so please join me to pay respect to Pam. And thank you for everyone's great service to the community.
So, I have the pleasure of doing the next...
So I have the pleasure of doing the next one, and I am going to ask Karen Redfield, who is the retiring principal at Cordova Gardens, to join me down front. So I'm particularly pleased to be able to welcome this lady and recognize her. My kids went to gardens. And actually, one of my son's teachers is on staff there now.
Who's that?
Cody. No, Cody. Budge.
Oh, Cody. Oh, he just joined us. He's awesome.
I knew I liked this lady. But I have to tell you, there is so much more to this. I'm going to read this, but there is just so much more to Karen beyond what's here. She makes us all feel like we are just spinning our wheels and we've been wasting our time, and we should have been busier. You would be amazed. So this is a proclamation honoring Karen Redfield for her service and her generosity to Rancho Cordova. Whereas Karen's professional career of 39 years has been focused on educating children and making a difference in the lives of others. And whereas upon graduation from California State University Fresno, Karen began her teaching career in the town of Portsmouth, Virginia. Upon returning to California, she enjoyed a rewarding career as a bilingual teacher in grades K through 8 in central and southern California. And whereas, after 20 years of teaching, Karen accepted an administrator position within the Riverside Unified School District and spent evenings completing an administrative credential through Azusa Pacific University. Her administration career led her to accept positions in Whittier, California, Adelanto, California, Palm Springs, California, and Labor here in Rancho Cordova. Whereas, in 2014, Karen joined the Folsom-Cordova Unified School District. Karen believed that this would be her dream principal job with which to end her professional working career. The past four years at Cordova Gardens has been a highlight of her career, she says. The staff at Cordova Gardens is compassionate and talented. The district is so supportive and professional. The connections and the support to the community of Rancho Cordova have just been amazing. And we didn't have to make that up. She put that into her bio for us. As a principal, Karen has worn many hats. One of those tasks included improving attendance rates, which is monitored closely. Two years ago, Dottie Camp, did I pronounce your name right? Dottie Camp started kindergarten. She lived with her grandmother, Lorraine Testis. Lorraine walked her granddaughter a long distance every day to school despite adverse weather conditions. Over the years, Karen has had the opportunity to meet with Lorraine and discuss Dottie's education. It became clear to Karen through their interactions that Dottie's education was extremely important to Lorraine, and Karen applauds Lorraine's dedication to teaching Dottie about the value of an education. Whereas, as Karen transitions into retirement, she would like to do something to assist Lorraine and Dottie, because it turned out, because she became aware that Lorraine was trying to raise money selling recyclables in order to buy herself a car so that she and her granddaughter wouldn't have to walk so far everywhere. Karen, therefore, offered Lorraine her car as a gift to assist the family with transportation, and Lorraine gratefully accepted. So therefore, be it resolved that the City Council of the City of Rancho Cordova expresses our sincere appreciation to Karen for all of her wonderful service to her Cordova Gardens community, her families, her friends, and those of us here in Rancho Cordova.
Thank you. Thank you so much. First of all, let me say thank you. I'm truly honored to be here. It is a pleasure. And I feel that I am here representing Cordova Gardens and Rancho Cordova. This has been the true highlight of my career. As you heard, I was a bilingual teacher for 20 years, and then bilingual education kind of went by the wayside, but my heart never left it. And when I saw that Cordova Gardens was a FLESS school, I went running. A FLESS is a foreign language elementary school, and we taught Spanish so that the students would leave our fifth grade class going into the middle school so that they could go straight into the baccalaureate in the high school and complete their Spanish by the time they went to college. So that was my dream job. I saw it posted. I went running to my husband, and I said, can you believe this? They would never hire me. But I applied anyway, and I was amazed and grateful when I got the offer. Working in Rancho Cordova, I've never worked, as you've heard, I've been in many cities. I kind of like to travel a lot. I've never, ever been in a city that is so amazing in the connections and the support that happens with the school system. Rancho PD, you are amazing. The amount of support you give our schools, the love and the care you show our families and our students, I commend you for everything you do. The city, you've been involved, our Junior Achievement Day, all the ways you support us, all of the local businesses. It has been a pleasure, and I can't imagine a better ending to my career. So thank you.
Thank you. It's beautiful. Thank you. So partly, Karen wanted to be able to present the keys tonight to the grandmother, and unfortunately, the grandmother became ill and was not able to attend tonight. But I know you'll be able to do that later. So we're going to move into public comment, and I should have asked you earlier, reminded everybody earlier, that we have speaker cards at the back table. And my goodness gracious, our former city manager just walked in. This is going to be a very good night. So, and I should have asked everybody who wanted to speak in public comment to sign up on a speaker card, but do we have anybody signed up, Stacy?
I do. I have two speaker cards.
Okay. California government code provides an opportunity for everybody to speak in council. Just remember, please, that unless something is on the agenda, we can either take, we can't take any action on it, but we can refer you to appropriate staff or schedule something on a future agenda. So if you'll call the speakers.
First speaker is Larry Ladd, and if you could introduce yourself, you'll have three minutes.
Larry Ladd, one of the co-founders, one of the founding fathers, along with Bob McGarvey and Linda and everybody else for the city of Rancho Cordova. And I want to go even beyond the 15 years. Let's go nostalgia to the Critical Laughco meeting, where Lauren Hammond was the swing vote. And unfortunately, at that critical junction, the brains behind the whole city operation, which was Shelley Blanchard, she fell ill. So I took my own initiative. There was a study that suggested there was a relationship between perchlorate and sickle cell anemia. So I wanted to go talk to Lauren Hammond about that, and I was getting stonewalled, so I used my own methods, which Kurt Haven just about went nuts over. Anyway, it all worked out. I think Rebecca Sloan had a big hand in making it happen. And at the critical moment, Linda went outside to decide what the boundaries are, and when the boundaries came out, David came up to me and said, does this look okay, Larry? And I'm going like, oh, I guess so. Anyway, part of when Lauren said, yes, you can have a city, was we as a city decide, have a role in saying what's safe in our drinking water. So that's the stuff we've been dropping off here. And I just wanted to point out that what I dropped off last year, I've written the authors, asking specifics, still haven't got an answer, but things don't come quickly in science. The stuff I wanted to talk about Lauren Hammond got published like last month. So 15 years, wait. But you can know stuff by looking at a graph. It took five years, I saw this on a graph, it took five years for somebody in Korea to publish and point out what was relevant. And so the last thing I dropped off and didn't comment is the rationale for what I gave you last year, which is if you knock out the four highlighted tumor suppressors, then it activates the critical tumor suppressor, and that's it. I know better than to test you on this, because students do not listen right before they party. So enjoy.
Thank you, Larry.
My second speaker card is for Joyce Rosenberg.
Honorable Mayor, honorable council members, I just would like to take a few minutes to ask you to please, please consider banning the sale of fireworks in Rancho Cordova next year. Look at our sky. Today, when I came out of my house, our sky was nasty, and it's because of the fires. There was a fire south of my house yesterday, lots of fire trucks. There was one near where I was partying last Sunday, off of Rossmore, over in that area. I don't know what caused them. I don't know if it was fireworks, but I know that they're not helping the air quality that we're breathing. I think it's just about time that we think seriously. I know that they make money for charities. I know there's got to be a better way to do it. Kids get hurt, fires start. I really wish you'd think about banning it. I wish the county would ban it. But just something for you to think about. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So we're going to move into council reports, and we're going to try to be brief, because we really do want to start the party. Everybody's outside waiting for us. The band is tuning up.
I'll be very brief. I attended the League of California Cities Monterey meeting, or I guess classes more, I guess the meeting happened on Saturday, which I didn't miss, and that's just fine. But there were some great sessions. One that was on communicating and using social media to reach your constituents, and we heard from the PIO of Vacaville and Roseville about some interesting strategies there. And then a very eye-opening presentation that I was sharing with a few of you was the CEO of PERS, speaking, or Executive Director of PERS, speaking on their lack of being able to hit their return targets, and what that might mean for employers in jurisdictions across the state of California. And I just have to say that for all of us that live in Rancho Cordova, thank God we live here, and we're only a 15-year-old city. And if you want to learn more about it, you'll understand that there are a lot of communities and governments surrounding us that are going to be taking more and more money out of their general fund that they use to pay for police and other city services, and they're going to be putting it into pensions, which they should, because they made a lot of promises. But what that's going to make us look like financially in comparison to a lot of our surrounding communities, this is a very enviable community to live in going forward financially. And after nine years as a public servant, and yes, I've been here for five years, but I've been at a, I was at a school district before that had, has very large problems when it comes to a lot of this stuff, the state or somebody are going to have to figure this out. I mean, PERS is one recession away from crisis across this state in a lot of ways. And that was, that was essentially admitted by, by the executive director. And the one interesting thing was they're looking to hire a new chief investment officer that is more aggressive in how they deploy their capital and actually looking at an equity fund that would not be controlled by the PERS board, which seems like an interesting idea. So yeah, that was, those were my biggest takeaways. It was a great conference. It's the first time I've actually been able to attend that conference, and I will say that as far as quality of sessions, for those of you who are comparing it to the big Long Beach-Sacramento conference, hands down, this was the best, the best educational opportunity or sessions that I've seen come from the League of California Cities. And I think part of it was just the size of the grouping that came, that when you don't have thousands of people to try to educate and have 10 sessions all at once, you get some really high-quality speakers to come and speak. So if anyone's thinking about going to it next year, I highly recommend it.
Thank you, Donald. Garrett.
I'll make it quick. Welcome, Floor Connection, Mimoso House, and Fantastic Sam's to Rancho Cordova. Thank you, Diane, for setting that up in the chamber. It's amazing to see these great new businesses. If you haven't gone, the Mimoso House has an amazing breakfast. Amazing. Exciting news, I was able to get, we have all these new, we were able to get $384,000 of upgrades from the Cable Commission. They're going to come into Rancho. So all our gear, the way it streams to the website, all this stuff is getting upgraded this year. So we were able to get 380 grand, and that's all that really matters, because I'm bringing pork home. I've heard that. And the next one is, STA has also given us $100,000, so we were able to get that. Thank you, Albert, he's not here, for going with me. There he is. My man sits there and says, say no. Say no, and you want more money. And then lastly, I got to watch the library pass its budget, and it's sad, because they passed the budget, gave everyone raises, and yet don't know how they're going to keep all the librarians in the library, which is just, it's amazing. And I felt real bad, because I was like, so everyone got a raise, and now we don't have enough librarians for the libraries? And they're like, yep. And I was like, perfect. So, awesome, 400 grand coming to Rancho.
Thank you, Garrett. David.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I have a lot to report, but I'm going to summarize it just down to a couple of things. I've just come from the National League of Cities Board Meeting and Committee Meetings in Little Rock, Arkansas. We can all be very happy we're not living in Little Rock this time of year. One morning, I walked outside of my hotels, about 80 degrees at 8 o'clock in the morning with 80% humidity. Not necessarily the most pleasant, yeah, it's pretty much, you walk outside, instant sweat. I then, though, went to Monterey in the League of California Cities Board Meeting, where you almost had to wear a jacket when I was there on Friday and Saturday. It was nice and cool and beautiful. Before that, I have attended the Greater Sacramento Economic Development Council's Board Meeting, which was somewhat eventful. I'll tell you about it at a later date or by email. And most interestingly, in the past month, I attended the City Council Meeting in the city of Skagway, Alaska, because we arrived late one night, and it turned out that the Bed and Breakfast Innkeeper that my family and I were staying with, his wife had an issue in front of the City Council, and so that came up in conversation. And he said, and by the way, those bozos are over there meeting right now, just across the street. And my wife looked at me and said, see you later. And so I went over to the Skagway City Council Meeting, sat in the back. Everyone in the room looked at me like, who is that? Is that a lawyer for one of the cruise lines? You know, and we weren't there by cruise, we were there by plane. But this is a fascinating place. They have 741 people, and they have, guess how many visitors a year? 1.37 million visitors a year to a town with a population of 741, and many of those are only seasonal residents. They come for the summer, leave for the winter. So the rural population's maybe half of that. And their issues are amazing, you know, compared to ours. I'll share that with you guys privately sometime. But it was a lot of fun to see another city council in action, and frankly, they looked and sounded a lot like us. So things really are kind of the same everywhere in local government.
Okey-dokey. Thank you, David. Bob had a weather report from his sister today. It was 96 degrees and 96% humidity.
The Ohio Valley, which is where I grew up. But yeah, it's, you walk out the door and like going into a asylum, like you were talking about. It's, the humidity here is very comfortable.
Zero comparison.
Yeah. Some of the meetings I've gone to have been very similar to the others. The one for the sanitation district, we passed the budget. The one in the mosquito bed control board, that's also a budget that we passed. I'm looking at this list of things we're going to celebrate. We have free cone of ice, everything outside here we're talking about, right? Free concert by the River City Concert Band, I'm really looking forward to that. The birthday cake. In other words, I'm looking forward to the celebration of our 15th year as a city, just like everyone else is. And I'm so glad that we are. That video presentation was great. The two pictures, I think, showed some scouts drawing on the floor, this floor. So those of you who are walking on here and everything, as you walk, you're walking onto some of the things that the people did. They wrote on the floor, they wrote on it, they had a thing from the VFW, you get all kinds of things, but they put that down first in December of 2005, and then they put the carpet on top of that. So part of history of Rancho Cordova is right there under your feet. So it's quite, it was quite fun, and it was a great idea to let people... So it's quite, it was quite fun, and it was a great idea to let people actually put in what they were thinking about, and so happy as they were to be in the city of Rancho Cordova. And I am. It's been a great 15 years. We're going to see what we can do in the next 15.
Thank you, Bob. Bob brings up a really good point. You saw the photographs. I would refer you all to the picture in the rear, where in the middle it says "my," because this, we've always called this "my" City Hall. And it's not because it's "my" City Hall or "our" City Hall, it's because it belongs to everybody here. And what people were writing on the floor were the best wishes, their wishes for the city. And some of that is memorialized in that picture frame in the back. So you should all stop and read that. This has been a season of openings. The two I attended were for Mimosa House and Magnolia House, which is now the soon-to-be-relocated casino to the Sheep Herder. And it may sound a little bit incongruous, but they've kept all of the historic structures of the Sheep Herder, and it ensures its life for the next 50 or 100 years. I attended Secog while David was running around Arkansas, and I heard about the Civic Lab, which is a project of Secog, and we had people participate in it. They'll make a presentation here at City Hall to the City Council, and we're going to participate in it again next year because of the really cool, it's a think tank. And they put all these minds together from all over the region and think great thoughts. It sounds like the Wizard of Oz. We had a wonderful city lunch at the park, which sort of broke up when, as you said earlier, they had a large fire out at Mather, and everybody went running over to see what the fire was all about. And then I attended a solar installation for a dear lady who's lived in Rancho Cordova a very long time. This came from a company called Grid Alternatives, and they are similar to some of the rebuilding efforts, but they provided solar for this lady, which was really cool. And they want to participate in some of the volunteer-led programs that we have here in Rancho Cordova. So I'll be referring them to Lori Ann, but also they've actually done 40 of these solar installations here in Rancho Cordova already, and none of us knew anything about it. So we're very immersed in all of the activities that have to do for the Fourth of July. And I will, I will have to thank our communications team, Maria and Ashley and Russell, because Rancho Cordova is getting phenomenal publicity. And right now, almost anytime you turn on the TV, there is something about our, either our birthday or our Fourth of July that's on television, and it's very rewarding. We've earned this, guys. You all have earned this because of your participation here in Rancho Cordova and helping to make us where we are today. So we'll turn it over to the city manager for his report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just very briefly, I wanted to also, as we celebrate our 15-year birthday, also celebrate another accomplishment that we had just very recently. As you recall, earlier in this year in March, we were, we became aware that a piece, a significant piece of property in the city is potentially for sale. We received authorization from the City Council to enter into some negotiations, and I'm pleased to report back that the results of these negotiations have been successful. And on Friday at 1:00, the last Friday on June 30th, we officially became the owners of the 10-acre piece of the property that's adjacent immediately to the west of Folsom Lake College. This is the 10-acre parcel that goes all the way, extends all the way to La Loma Drive, formerly owned by the Lilly Company. This truly creates, provides a wonderful opportunity for the city to revitalize and look at the opportunities to revitalize this section of Folsom Boulevard. And council, thank you for your persistence and perseverance to finally achieve this goal. And I would also like to take this opportunity to thank Adam and his office for helping with the transaction, and Stefan Heisler, who helped me directly to work on the contract language, and our broker, Ken Noack, who helped with this acquisition. This is truly a great accomplishment for the city.
That is another thing worth celebrating, guys. So thank you very much, Cyrus. We're going to move into the consent calendar. Consent calendar items are deemed routine in nature, and unless somebody has an item they need to discuss, they can be approved all in one motion. So we're going to ask the city clerk to announce the consent calendar.
We have four items on the consent calendar relating to mail ballot elections. Those items include 9.2, a resolution declaring the results of the mail ballot election relating to the imposition of the annual stormwater utility fee on the Superior Self-Storage Project in the city of Rancho Cordova. Item 9.3, a resolution declaring the results of the mail ballot election relating to the imposition of the annual stormwater utility fee on the Homewood Suites Project in the city of Rancho Cordova. 9.6, a resolution declaring the results of mail ballot election for Rancho Cordova Transit Related Services Special Tax Area Zone 22, Super Self-Storage. And item number 9.7, a resolution declaring the results of mail ballot election for Rancho Cordova Transit Related Services Special Tax Area Zone 21, Homewood Suites Project. One of the things that the city clerk's office has done is we have tabulated the ballots for items 9.2, 9.3, 9.6, and 9.7, and we declare that a majority approves the proposed actions. The council may take the recommended action on those particular items.
Super. Thank you, Stacy. And the only thing I would correct is that it is Superior Self-Storage, not Super.
Sorry, yes. Thank you.
Can I ask a quick question? Why did the clerk have to read that if it's on consent? I'm just trying to understand.
We usually, we usually don't have those items on consent. We, and we do declare the results publicly in addition to just stating them off consent.
Just checking. Thank you.
So do we have anybody signed up to speak for them?
No.
Is, does, if anybody doesn't want, the other way around, if nobody wants to pull an item for discussion, we can entertain a motion?
Move the calendar. Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Who was the second?
They were.
They were, yeah.
You pick.
David Sander. Okay. Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. Consent public hearing items are also basically the same. If you'll read 10.1.
Getting there. 10.1, a resolution authorizing delinquent residential solid waste service charges to be collected on the property tax roll.
Thank you. I'll open the public hearing and ask if we have anybody signed up to speak to the item.
No, we do not.
Are there questions or comments about the item? Seeing none, I would close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Call the roll, please.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, thank you very much. Motion carries. If you'll read 10.2.
10.2, ordinance number 15-2018, amending sections of the Rancho Cordova Municipal Code related to Title VI, Health and Sanitation, and Title XXIII, Zoning Code.
Okay, we're going to ask the Planning Department to make a few comments. Just to explain what's going on.
Good evening, Mayor Budge, members of the council, Darcy Clark, the Planning Department. On June 18th, we brought to the council various zoning and municipal code amendments. Included in that was Title IV Bingo Games and Beagle Parlors. At the meeting, all items that were being proposed for amendment were continued to tonight. After some discussions internally, staff would like some additional time to rework the Bingo Games and Beagle Parlor section. So before you tonight are just those changes to Title VI and Title III that we discussed on June 18th. And then the Bingo discussion has been continued to August 20th. We will renotice that, and it will be done under a whole new ordinance at that time.
Super. Thank you, Darcy. So are there any questions of staff? Okay, then we'll open the public hearing and ask if there are anybody signed up to speak.
No, there's not.
Then I will close the public hearing and ask for a motion.
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Adam, do we need to, no, but do we need to restate it? Okay, all right. Call the roll, please, Stacy.
Councilmember Gatewood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sander.
Aye.
Councilmember Terry.
Aye.
Vice Mayor McGarvey.
Aye.
Mayor Budge.
Yes, motion carries. Okay, with that, it's time to party. Meeting adjourned.